We're all set. If we can have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Bob, Sue just texted everyone and asked how to get into the building.
Would you please? We will have Dr. Beeler help Mrs. Miss Freeze to get in. Mrs. Ray, there are no changes to the order in the agenda.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda. You're gonna have to help me out, Bob. I'm having a tough time here.
Motion by Mr. Colton, seconded by Mr. Early.
Um, favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carried.
The first item is a presentation of the district's reopening plan. And I will jump in here and start and and then I will turn it over to Dr. Beeler in just a moment. I would like to first acknowledge and thank the leadership team, our building principals, Ms. Pavone, Mrs. Beaver, Mr. Seibert, our assistant principals, Mr. Long, Mrs. Magara, our directors, Mrs. Beatty, Mrs. Dudek, and soon to be Assistant Director, Mr. Parisi, as well as Rich Pankowski, Bob Finch at the Transportation Department, and Chef Drew in the kitchen, as well as a host of administrative support staff, teaching staff, paraprofessionals, parents, students, and the Board of Education for helping us get to the point where we can begin the important conversations of meeting the state deadline of submitting our reopening plans to the state by close of business on Friday. Dr. Beeler and the administrators will talk extensively about the input that we have received from the community members, as well as our staff, to make sure our bedrock principles of safety, wellness, and academic rigor are still maintained during this period of transition. Over the next, over the past several weeks, since the state first identified this urgent matter of public policy, to describe our staff's rally as anything other than Herculean and amazing would be an understatement. We are in the position that we are in as a district because of the amazing advocacy of our staff. That doesn't mean we've all agreed on everything, and nor does it mean that this plan is perfect. But this plan meets our needs today and creates a foundation and a platform for revisions to meet our needs as we return to school operations in approximately one month from today. Those conversations have been necessary and important to fulfill our obligation to be safe, to make sure our staff, students, and parents are well during this transition, and to ensure that academics and teaching and learning remains our primary and fundamental task as a K-12 school district. I would also like to recognize, and it goes without saying, but I will say it, the efforts of Dr. Beeler and Mrs. Magara in particular, from a district operation standpoint, have been exemplary throughout this entire COVID process. Mark keeps us focused on academics, and Karen helps to make sure that the trains keep running on time and that we can do the important work that's necessary to reopen our schools in short order. With that, as we begin this process, I would like to finally state that this couldn't occur without the support of our community as well. And as I see many of them logging in and signing into this meeting, it is important to note that this is our normal for at least the next few weeks. We would encourage our parents, as well as our staff, and especially our students, to please reach out to us, to communicate to us, to ensure that we are getting it right, and that if we're not, that we know it. We trust that the Warrior Nation will continue to be strong advocates for our three fundamental principles of safety, wellness, and teaching and learning. And at this point in time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Beeler to give us a more in-depth analysis and reporting of what our plans have evolved into at this point in time. Dr. Beeler.
Thank you, Mr. Briedenstein. There we go. So you should be... Let's see. There we are. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to present the current status and position of where the district is in the development of the Safety and Education Plan. The plan itself really is comprised of two components, a safety piece and then an educational component, which is purposely placed second because, of course, safety is first, but that educational plan has to first meet the safety requirements that have been recommended by the CDC, as well as put in place by the New York State Education Department. I do want to reiterate one very important statement, which is that if we cannot open our building to students and staff safely, we simply are not going to open our buildings. So while you're going to hear a plan that particularly the safety component is exceptionally, we believe, well thought out, and has a lot of precautions that have been put in place, if for one reason or another we are not able to meet those requirements when we have students and staff in place, then we will not be opening the building to students and staff. We will look at our alternative form of education, which is through e-learning. So before I get into exactly where we are right now, I'd like to provide a little bit of a context of the time that has gone into this and where we have been. So the week of July 6th, the district sent out a parent survey, as well as a staff survey. The week of July 13th, we were provided with state guidance, and we began initial planning based upon some of that survey data. The week of July 20th, a second survey was initiated, as well as the continued development of the safety plan. We held three district-level stakeholder meetings and six building-level stakeholder meetings. So that was last week. The week of July 27th, we have continued those meetings this week and will continue them for the purpose of finalizing our safety and education plan. Next week, that plan will go out for review. If we complete it earlier, it will go out for public review to our community this week, but by next week, Monday, that will be out for public review. And then coupled with that, we know that next week, the governor will be weighing in with what his expectations are for schools, and basically whether or not schools will be open in the fall or not. So before I go too much further, last week, we generated a survey that was distributed secondary or second to the primary one that we implemented about two weeks ago. This survey was administered to both our community members, our students, as well as our parents. To this date, we have had about 300, well, exactly 366 responses, of which 77% have been from parents, about 18 to 19% have been from community stakeholders, and then a small number of students who have responded to the survey as well. So when we look at the representative grouping of the survey respondents, we see that from Prospect Elementary, we have a percentage of about 48%. We have from Seneca Intermediate, 40%, and from the high school, about 55%. Now, automatically, many of you are doing some math, thinking that we've made an error and that we are at about 140-some-odd percent. What this actually represents is the opportunity to multiply select schools, meaning that many of the parents have students in multiple schools in the district. We also have feedback from the Warrior Academy, big picture, as well as the Ellicottville CTE Center, which is Career and Technical Education Center. So a couple of questions that were informative. Out of the 366 responses, when we asked the question, "Do you have sufficient internet access at home?", about 86 of the respondents indicated that they do. So we have about 14 folks who currently report not having sufficient internet access at home. When we talk about our current work and employment situation, because we know that schools, the primary purpose of schools is for educating our students, but at the same time, we have a symbiotic relationship with parents and that they depend upon us also for basic childcare, as well as for the education of students. So about 50% of the respondents are working full-time, and then, you know, sort of a sampling across the board as far as laid off, working, unemployed, retired, or other. One question that we specifically wanted to get information about is how dependent upon schooling is your employment situation? So you'll see that that's relatively varied, meaning to the question, if students return to school in September, would that improve your employment situation or your availability to improve employment? So of that, only 22% responded yes, which was kind of interesting to us in general. I think we anticipated a lot more folks would have indicated that that having students in school would help them with their employment. About 38% or 39% said it was not applicable, and another 39% said simply that it would not. I do want to just make a note regarding the internet access question and the relatively large number of respondents who indicated that they have appropriate internet. It doesn't go past us that they needed to have the internet to complete the survey. So those folks who responded favorably as having internet were not necessarily a representative sample of everyone, but of those folks who had the internet and were actually able to answer the questions. A couple of questions that were basically put on what we call a Likert scale, from one to five, of strongly disagree to agree. "I believe in-person school should resume as normal in September with new procedures to reduce the spread of the illness." The majority of individuals indicated that they disagreed, or actually strongly disagreed. So that was a one. If we end up with a one and two, which is still of the disagree category, we end up with more than half. And then about 20% said that they would agree with that comment. This is a question similar to the previous, but focuses on the concept of having half of the students attend school on any given day, so the intent to reduce the number of students in school at one point in time. We still end up with a preponderance of the individual saying that they disagree with having in-person school resuming in September, and only about 20 or a quarter saying that they agree with that comment. This question, which says, "I believe schools should not resume in September," and that all students should continue using distant learning technologies until a vaccine becomes available. We ended up with the majority of individuals, so over a third indicating yes, and less than, well, about a third indicating that they disagreed with that particular comment. Now, embedded in there with all sorts of pieces talking about a vaccine, which could vary the responses, but the intent here is to just get a general polling of where our students and adult members of the community are. This question expanded on extracurriculars. So what is your expectation regarding student athletics, performing arts, extracurricular activities if students do return in the fall? And this is pretty equally distributed, plus or minus about 4%. So we have 30% saying, "I fully expect these events to be provided for student participation." About another third indicating that I'm concerned because of social distancing challenges, and another third simply saying, "I would not allow my student to participate in the events, period." So one thing that I think is important to take away from there is that while we get a general consensus that returning to school in September isn't necessarily the favorite for everyone, there are still individuals who would like to see students return to school in the fall, and we are definitely getting feedback that no matter what, students will not be returning from some families. So we've taken that information, as well as the previous survey data, and added that to our safety plan. Our safety plan was completed. Now, we had a safety plan about a month and a half, about two months ago, when we entered Phase Three for Forward New York. That plan met the basic and most essential safety requirements for having adults in our schools and essentially opening back up for in-person business. Last week, we adopted and began to implement a significantly more detailed safety plan for adults on our campuses. We have now basically fully implemented that and are going through the training process and training requirements that go along with that. You should have been provided that by email. There are a portion of that that will be provided to all of our adults that are on campus. They will go through multiple training sessions, including how to properly take on and take off a mask, proper handwashing techniques, social distancing expectations, and then they will sign off that they agree to the expectations that are in there. Everything from simply, "If you're ill, do not come to school," as well as the screening processes that are going to be required for any person who occupies one of our buildings. All of us went through that screening process today. That includes encouraging to take an online survey so we can reduce the line of traffic that comes into the building to our sign-in stations, signing in within that survey, our questions regarding a fever, questions regarding symptoms, and then travel to restricted states. All of that gets sent back to, if you do it electronically, to Mr. Haley, who's overseeing the implementation of our safety plan, and to the supervisors of those particular areas. The purpose for this is, one, so that we have a measure of ensuring that those who enter the building do not have any symptoms of coronavirus or are ill. The other is so that, since they've signed in, we also have the ability then to go back, should we have a confirmation of a positive case, that we can actually go back and do more effective contact tracing. I'll go through a little bit more of the safety plan as we continue this evening, but the purpose to implement the safety plan well ahead of developing the education plan is so that the adults who are developing the plan understand what the safety requirements are for anybody in the building, so that we have a better, are betterly enabled to determine what the logistical abilities are of actually having students in the building. Our education plan, which we're going to be talking about this evening, is still a work in progress. We believe we've made some pretty significant movement forward to putting one in place that makes sense, but that really is the purpose of this evening, to discuss where we are, where we're headed, and then give a little bit of foreshadowing as to what we intend the final product to be before we put it out for public comment and then make revisions upon that. So before we get into too much detail, one of the things that I want to emphasize and start with is the district philosophy. So in other words, where are we as a district? Because once we have a district philosophy, each one of the buildings will be adopting that and beginning to implement and develop their own building plans, so that the needs of the students at varying grade levels can be met, given the conditions that we have with pandemic. One thing that's important to recognize is that no matter what the circumstances of having students on campus or off campuses, campus, we need to be completely prepared for shifting to remote, or what we're referring to as e-learning. It is likely in the fall that we will have varying cases, and we'll have to shut down in-school attendance for probably multiple times. So we need to ensure that we are proficient, and not just proficient, but actually will excel at the use of e-learning. And when I talk about e-learning, I'm talking about basically what we have referred to as remote instruction or homeschooling, homebound instruction. All of those terms were encapsulating into what we're going to call e-learning. So moving forward, as we talk about our educational plan, a couple of things that the district is going to prioritize. First and foremost, the district is going to prioritize the requests of parents and guardians. And what that means is if a parent indicates that they wish their student to be on 100% e-learning, the district will acknowledge that and do the very best that we can to support that and provide the highest quality e-learning that we can. There are districts that have indicated that if the student is supposed to be in school and they provide the safety measures, that the expectation is students will be in school. We are not saying that. I just want to make sure we're on the same page. We will be providing essentially an opportunity for our parents to be able to select what is the best educational plan for their particular student. What do they feel the most comfortable with? Because we know that if student or a parent who doesn't feel safe is not going to be able to learn. So if a parent indicates that they wish their student to remain 100% virtual, we will do and provide e-learning for them. Also, on the flip side, if parents for one reason or another indicate that their child needs to be in school, we will accommodate that to the greatest of our ability, given whatever the parameters are that we have for in-school instruction. We're going to be focusing on families, meaning we fully recognize that we have students in multiple buildings that reside in the same household. So if a student is coming into school for education, and they're in first grade, but they have a sibling in sixth grade, that first and sixth grader, if they're both coming into school, will come to school on the same days if we switch to a hybrid instructional format. So we will be grouping and clustering students by families, so that we can ensure that we don't have childcare issues at home, and really, that just makes sense and is what's in the best interest of our families. We're going to be prioritizing our power standards. So what that means is we're not going to be, while we will provide enhanced instruction and enrichment activities, we're going to focus on what is absolutely essential, especially as we begin the fall. We're very good at e-learning. We believe our teachers did an exceptional job in the spring when they made that transition, but there's still an awful lot to learn. Over the summer, we have adopted and begun to implement new instructional strategies and new technologies that allow us to actually take what we know are the best practices in a classroom, person-to-person setting, and be able to apply them in a electronic learning format. So that's small group instruction. That's ongoing formative assessment, and we can do that now with the use of enhanced Zoom capabilities, which are just coming online for us this week. So that means we can now have students go into breakout rooms, work in small groups, collaborate together on consistent tasks. We also can implement polls into Zoom lessons that we might have electronically and get a gauge as far as student understanding goes. We're going to prioritize the social and emotional well-being of our students and staff, and I want to make sure that I emphasize our staff as well. It's exceptionally important to understand that, you know, if our staff isn't comfortable in an environment, that it doesn't take long for our students to pick up on that. So we are very much interdependent between the staff and our students, so we need to ensure that all of our adults on campus, as well as our students on campus, are comfortable in having their basic needs met. And then we're going to return students to school on a spectrum, meaning our intent is, if we're bringing students back in September, or when we do, that is our current plan, they're not going to all come back at the same time. There's way too many variables with regard to the safety piece that, you know, if we're going to bring back, let's say we do the hybrid approach of half on in school on one particular day, we're not going to phase that or bring that all in on day one. This is in more detail, I'll explain on that shortly. But this is basically, you know, as I said, the overarching philosophy that we have for the district. So some of the recommendations to date. The first week, when we would typically start school, we'll be solely focused on e-learning and training for our staff. The buildings will be implementing the education plans based upon the student needs and performance, and you'll hear more on that. I know you're all looking to hear, "What are the specifics by building?", and each one of our building principals are going to go through that in just a few moments. We're also investigating at this point, learning hubs off-campus. So in other words, how can we accommodate students who can't make it into Prospect or the high school campus and Seneca Intermediate? How can we work with them off of those buildings? So in other words, a separate location where we can have staff there, we can have appropriate internet and resources, so that if students have transportation issues or concerns, we can work with them in what we're going to be referring to as learning hubs. So a little bit more on that e-learning piece. We know that e-learning is going to be an essential component of everything that we're doing moving forward. So our intent is to use high-quality, research-based instructional strategies, but to employ those using e-learning technologies. So step one, we recognize that in the spring, the expectations for students, as well as the expectations for staff, were inconsistent. A student who maybe showed up to a Zoom class one day a week had the same grading expectations as a person who might have been there three, four, or four times. There were a lot of reasons for that. We tried to do our best to be as understanding as possible for our students, but we also recognize, and with the feedback that we gathered, both from parents, students, and teachers, that we need to have much better expectations of what e-learning is going to look like for those students at home. We're also going to have those expectations for teachers, and we're going to have expectations for parents and guardians. If students are going to be learning remotely through e-learning, then we all need to be on the same page with what the expectations are, what that looks like, and realize that this is real school and real learning needs to be occurring. We're also going to provide some significant consistency. So we had encouraged very much the use of Class Pages as a primary location where instructional resources for all of our students were held, but not all of our teachers, when we initially transitioned to remote instruction in the spring, were utilizing Class Pages. So we had some people using Teams, we had some people using Google Classroom, we had some people, you know, using Class Pages, we had some people that were getting emails. We have provided consistency, and moving forward, Class Pages will be the primary, actually, I almost want to say the only, but will be the primary location where all student learning will take place, and that'll be the primary learning platform. We will also be specifically utilizing Zoom. So Zoom will be what we will use to deliver synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And then for communication with students and parents and community members, Class Dojo will be utilized for grades pre-K through three, and for grades four through 12, we will be utilizing an enterprise version of Remind, which also gets integrated in with Class Pages, so that we have another vehicle which is much more consistent for communicating with students and parents and making sure that they're getting information from all of their teachers in the same format. With regard to technology, there are some technology pieces that we have been working on over the summer to acquire, but as I mentioned, we're going to have more firm guidelines for all of our students, staff, and parents. We have been updating laptops and iPads, and actually in the process of acquiring additional ones, not only for replacement, but enhancement for our students. The training has been ongoing all summer. And as I mentioned previously, that first week when we come back, we will be working with our students or with our staff to ensure that they are up to speed on some of the latest and newest technologies that we have in place, but we're also going to be training our students and particularly our parents. So when we say that Class Dojo is what we use for communication, or we say that Class Pages is what we're using as our learning management system, then the parents need to know how to access that and where to go to for information. We know that we have Kijit and improved our Wi-Fi capability for those individuals who do not have Wi-Fi access at home for our students. We're also going to be establishing Zoom protocols. We've all seen those Zoom meetings where people are sitting or laying in bed, or in exceptionally, I'm going to say, informal settings. You know, we have come to the conclusion that that's not appropriate. Education is important, and we should have a professional image when we, as adults, are presenting it from the school, and there should be some basic expectations of what students should be doing. We wouldn't necessarily allow them to lay on the floor in our classrooms, and at the same time, while they're at home in the comfort of their home, they can still be attentive, seated at a table with paper and pencil, ready to learn and put things into practice. And then I also mentioned previously the e-learning hubs. We're looking at various locations where we can... We're looking at various locations where we can provide high-quality internet access, as well as staffing, that isn't necessarily in our traditional building classrooms. So, to get a little bit more detail as far as what each one of our buildings are looking at with regard to bringing students back, we're going to start with the high school. I'm going to ask Mr. Seibert to come on up and talk to us a little bit about the process that he has followed with his students, staff, and adults in the community to get to some of the decisions he has, as well as some of the decisions that the committees have made.
Thank you. So, first, I guess I'd like to say that I, like most people, am a proponent that in-person teaching and learning is the best way to go. I believe that for most students across the board, and we saw that in the spring, a lot of our students thrived with in-person learning and education. However, I was also one of the people who believed that come September, we'd be back to business as usual. As we've progressed throughout the summer with regulations and guidance from the Department of Health, the governor, and the stakeholder groups that we've had some meetings with that included parents, students, and teachers, along with discussions with the administrators, it is clear that it's not going to be business as usual in the beginning of the year. The safety of our students and staff has always been the priority, and the number one concern of all stakeholders was to make sure that we were able to provide a safe environment for everyone to learn in. Many of those concerns was about, again, an appropriate environment, making sure that it was one that we were able to monitor, social distancing, appropriate hand washing, and respiratory hygiene. And I will say, everyone that I talked to, from teachers to parents to students, they all want to be back in school, but they just want to do it safely. So, the discussion kind of evolved into more along the lines of taking it slow and making sure all the processes were in place when we were re-entering. The survey that Dr. Beeler had shared actually had 177 families from high school students that responded, and I don't know if the graph was shown, but of the 177 responses, 150 of them had indicated that e-learning at this time was an acceptable option.
You say was?
Was, was an acceptable option. So, currently, we're in the process of setting up an e-learning committee to develop guidelines and expectations for the staff and students, and as Dr. Beeler said, although we did a good job in the spring, we learned a lot about e-learning and best practices. This will be developed, written, and communicated to staff, students, and parents. Again, we all have a role in this. The plan, as we begin school with an e-learning structure, we are planning a tech camp at the beginning in which we will invite a grade level in a day. So, let's say the first day is eighth grade will come in, we will spend time making sure that they have all the materials that they need, we will make sure that we go over specifically how to access anything that's on the device that they will need to access to, Class Pages, email, and those kinds of things. We will teach them a brief bit about social distancing, we'll be able to spread them out where we don't have to worry about that, we'll make sure that they all have masks, we'll talk about hand washing and respiratory hygiene. We are going to try and maximize e-learning. In other words, for any student that is successful learning this way at home, we will continue to do this at this time. However, also in the spring, we learned that there was a number of students that will need to come to school, whether it's because of poor internet access, or they just weren't able to be successful at home and they needed extra supports. Those students, we will have the opportunity for them to come in daily, be socially distanced either in the gym or classrooms or the library where they will have internet access, where they'll have access to the e-learning from a structured standpoint here at school. We, again, from a historical standpoint, from what happened in the spring, we have a pretty good idea of who those students are that we need to reach out to now to make sure that we provide that to. Part of the discussion that we've kind of wrestled with is what about the staff? Will they work from home or will they work here from school? One of the things that we've talked about from administrative group, and one of the things that I'm going to want from my staff is I'm going to want them here at school. As far as what the actual day will look like for them, I'm anticipating that they will be working from their rooms to deliver their lessons, and this is for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think it creates more of a professional setting for the teachers to be in the classroom, presenting their lessons in an actual classroom. I think that will give a little more sense of urgency to the students and the fact that it is a class. But I think more importantly, as we start to phase students back in, we need to make sure that our teachers are 100% onboard and practicing the habits and the expectations that we have, from the social distancing to the mask-wearing, to the hygiene across the board. And I know that we've had meetings, and we're not perfect at it yet either, because there was a meeting earlier today where Dr. Beeler and I, we violated, I don't know how many rules, but there was a number of them. So, I mean, those are the facts. So, those are things that we need to make sure that we have completely vetted out with all the staff, I think, prior to bringing students back and putting them in a situation where we need to lead by example and teach them how to interact in this new world. But as I said before, I am a proponent of in-person learning, so we will have a phased re-entry. As we feel comfortable, and I can't give a date on it, but as we feel comfortable with our ability to make sure that the students are safe, we will do a phased re-entry where we're looking at like eighth grade, and I'm just giving grades and dates, it's not set in stone by any means, but like, say, eighth grade would come in on Monday, we would be able to socially distance them, we'd be able to spread them out into 10 or 12 rooms. I've went through and I've done the measurements, in a normal classroom, we can have about 11 students in there, in a science classroom, we can get up to about 16, but we'd be able to spread them out, we would be able to monitor them, we'd have a teacher in each of the rooms, we could still do some in-person and some virtual, but at least they have that adult there working with them as well. So, let's say eighth grade would come in on Monday, ninth grade would come in on Tuesday, 10th grade on Wednesday, 11th grade Thursday, Friday would be 12th grade, and then again, as we feel comfortable with that, and that's being, you know, having some success, we would then gradually maybe look at having eighth and ninth come in on Monday and Tuesday and etc., so that way we would try and double that up. I think one of the priorities is that we're putting forth a plan that makes sense, and that it's not so convoluted that it creates confusion with parents and students and teachers. One of the biggest keys, I think, for this to be successful is to be able to effectively communicate all of this to all the parents, all the students, all the staff, and to me, that's a challenge because it all has to be done remotely, you know? It's not going to be in-person discussions for that, it's going to have to be communicated via Facebook and the web and Zoom meetings and things like that, but it needs to be something that makes sense and that is, I think, easily communicated to start, and then we can roll it up from there. So, that's the thought process of the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Seibert. At this time, as Mrs. Beaver is working her way up to discuss Seneca Intermediate, I just wanted to reinforce one of the comments that Mr. Seibert made. When we, yesterday, we spent the day going through our 44-page document of what are basically simply rules and opportunities and potential areas of cross-contamination, everything from keyboards, you know? When we have a tech person come in from the IT department and they need to touch our keyboard, how do we then clean that keyboard before we touch it? And then, they're working on it, we need to enter our password, it needs to be cleaned, we enter our password, it needs to be cleaned again, everything gets slowed down, and then all of a sudden, what we're thinking about primarily is, okay, how are these rules? What are the rules that I need to follow? Simple things, we had a training on face masks. How do we put a face mask on? How do we take a face mask off? What happens to the face mask when we're done? Because we can't leave it laying around on a table, because it's essentially, you know, the purpose of it is to collect what would be hazardous material from our body potentially, so we can't just have this thing, you know, laying around. We know that we can take it off when we're at a workstation, what do we do with it? How often do we clean it? Where do we put that when we're done with it at the end of the day? We've talked about clothing, what does that look like? And before long, we realized that these logistics are exceptionally difficult and will actually take time for us to practice. So, we don't believe it's prudent to have students report on the very first day or two days after we've explained all of these rules to our teachers. Our teachers, quite frankly, are going to need time to practice them. We are very social people by nature, educators are, we're people, people, and all of a sudden, we now have to have both operational and literal barriers between ourselves and others, and that is going to definitely take time for us to practice before we can then teach it to our students and then ensure that our students are practicing those procedures. So, this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Beaver to discuss the educational plan as it is right now at Seneca Intermediate.
Hi, I'm Nikki Beaver, Seneca Intermediate principal. This is probably my first formal introduction, and what an interesting time to be in this role, but I will say I do feel very supported and guided in the right direction, so I'm on the right track, I guess. I engaged in multiple stakeholder meetings with classroom teachers, special area teachers, our reading and math specialists, counselors, social workers, parents, students, the list is very long, and what I gathered was that many staff members are excited and eager to get back to the students. It made me very proud to be part of the district, to see and hear the passion of education among the staff. It was clear, though, at each meeting that safety is our number one priority. There's a lot of policies and protocols that need to be followed to open school back up safely. With that said, I would definitely agree with Mr. Seibert that having only staff on campus to begin school in September would probably be the best approach. We need to make sure the adults in the building are able to be adequately trained and follow protocols to serve as role models for our students when they return. I would like to see Seneca School start the school year with an e-learning approach. Seneca will begin using the district platform, Class Pages, to reach our students. So, the students and parents are familiar with this platform from the spring, so this would be our one-stop-shop approach where everything would be in one location, and we would continue to provide professional development and support for staff and also for families. We will use Remind to keep in communication with parents and students throughout the school year for consistency. Clear expectations will be in place for teachers, students, and parents for the e-learning environment. Everyone will know what's expected of them and will be held accountable. I would eventually like to be able to phase students into school, because like Mr. Seibert, I agree that, you know, being in school is the best place for students, as long as we can do it safely. So, when the district decides it's safe and acceptable, I would hope we could accomplish bringing students back by phasing them in based on the students' needs and supports, and also starting with our youngest students first. We will put students into e-learning cohorts and also in-school cohorts that meet all social distancing and safety protocols, so approximately 10 students in a classroom, and they would remain together for the day. For families that are more comfortable keeping their children at home, we will continue to support these students through an e-learning environment. For any of this to work, I believe it is important for us to customize student learning. I'm hoping at Seneca, we will use a cross-curricular approach to teaching and learning, and we will all be onboard. Staff will need to work together to align our lessons in ELA and social studies, as well as science and math. We have an opportunity in education to really do something great, we can focus on students' individual needs and needs to create meaningful lessons that engage students and get them hooked and excited about learning. The special areas, such as art, library, music, STEAM, those are all extremely important to me, and I believe they're an important component to a student's educational pathway. So, I plan to work with grade levels and special area teachers to build a curriculum that incorporates these areas into their daily instruction. So, for example, an art lesson that aligns to a concept being taught in social studies or science would be a great way to expand on the student learning and create a dynamic learning environment for everyone. These lessons may have to be pre-recorded or done via Zoom, but they are important and will be a part of the student's day. For me, the most important component, aside from student learning, is ensuring we are meeting the social, emotional needs of the children at this time. So, Seneca School will focus on building relationships with students. When we provide students with an environment that's predictable, where they feel safe, whether that be in-person or through e-learning, we're setting them up for success. So, some key takeaways after meetings with teachers, I feel that continuity and alignment is extremely important, being flexible and having teamwork on our side coming September, and then personalizing instruction for students using that three-pronged approach with e-learning, the hybrid model, and then an in-school learning.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we'll have Ms. Pavone, who will come up and share with us the educational plan as it stands right now for Prospect Elementary School.
She even made it so I don't have to touch the mic. Perfect. So, at Prospect, I was very thankful to be able to meet with a lot of stakeholders, the team leaders on multiple occasions, other grade-level members. We had a great show at the parent meeting, as well as a variety of emails and phone calls from a lot of different parents to be able to have input into what next school year looks like. The biggest concern is the safety. Is everyone going to feel safe within the school building, and how can we help support a safe environment, if that's even a possibility? I am very thankful for all the input. The conversations are hard to have because our passion is to be with kids in person. We want to be face-to-face, we want them to be in the building, but we have to make sure that we're doing it in a manner that's safe for everybody involved. We, I do believe strongly that staff should be in the building to practice the safety protocols, to be in a good place for instruction, to be in their own environment, to teach, to have their manipulatives at their fingertips, and all curriculum at their fingertips. There's also a lot of teachers that struggle with internet, and being within the school building would really help support them having that at their fingertips to be able to provide consistent instruction. Our philosophy at Prospect is e-learning would be available for whomever would want it. So, if you're a parent that chooses to do e-learning, that would be available to you. It would incorporate a schedule that could match a variety of parental needs, so if you're a parent that doesn't work till the afternoon, there'd be availability for your child to attend ELA, math, science, and social studies in the morning. It would take us a little bit away from the homeroom philosophy at the elementary, because the teacher that you have may not be the same for all three sessions. Let's say you have multiple kids in multiple grade levels, you'd be able to look at the schedule and say, at nine o'clock, my first grader can go to ELA, and then at 10, my second grader can go to ELA, and try to match up a schedule to match up. When a lot of the Zoom times were conflicting, it made it hard for multiple family members to get on at the same time. We also brainstormed the idea of the potential of some flexibility in scheduling for the online, so we could potentially offer it into the evening instead of just within the traditional school day. My ultimate goal and dream would be to be able to start a hybrid model within about two weeks of school starting, so do online for two weeks, and then gradually start to have students come in for the families that choose that model, but to start with our third graders, instead of starting with our youngest, start with our oldest, and then add grade levels as time progresses. The hybrid model would be looking at students potentially being in for two out of the five days, if not more if possible. The nice thing with Prospect is we have 19 classrooms that have bathrooms right within their classroom. That makes a big difference. I can have a cohort family stay together for four to five hours of the day within the same family and not have to worry about, oh my goodness, I just had 20 kids go use the game bathroom, or different things like that, they'd all be able to be within that same home environment the whole day, and looking at how can we creatively have a new the whole day in looking at how can we creatively have another adult come in and do lunch with the kids? And they're already used to doing breakfast within the classrooms. And we'd be looking to, at about eight to 10 kids in the classroom for that. We do know that the classroom will look different. We all love our bean bags and our carpets and our things like that. But we're going to have to abandon some of that to be able to keep safety as the priority. Online, Prospect has done a lot of training on class pages. That isn't something that we had used prior. But they have done a lot to get familiar with class pages and ready to use it. But we've also talked about the team approach. So there'd be a second grade class page. So that all second graders would be getting all the same lessons. We've discussed a lot of different avenues that that could happen to make sure that our kids that are online are getting the same instruction as our kids that are hybrid modeled. We also have a few classrooms that have exterior doors. So if they're going from a bus to the classroom, we'd be able to use the exterior doors. So then we're not having as much interaction in the hallway. And so in some senses, I'm in a lucky situation having the bathrooms and the exterior doors. And that eliminates some of the other complications of passing in the hallways to transfer for classes and things like that. Specials, we would start doing online on class pages through e-learning just until we make sure the environment is as safe as possible. And I don't want an adult going from a kindergarten classroom to a second grade classroom to a third grade classroom. That defeats the purpose of them being as a cohort family and keeping that family together. I think I covered. The one big thing for the e-learning is we wanted to make sure we had clear expectations and accountability for all students, whether they are e-learning or in the building. But I, I'm very proud of Prospect's dedication to still continuing to do what is best for kids, no matter what model that we do it from. And thankful that we can work with Seneca and the high school on making sure we're all meeting kids' needs first, along with their safety at the same time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pavone. One thing that I do also want to acknowledge is that we have a large number of students that have individual education plans, as well as other certain requirements. The special ed department has been consulted and has been involved with each one of the plans as we move forward. We thought about having her address that with us. But as the plans are fleshed out in a little bit more detail and as they're begin to change and be implemented more, the big takeaway is that our special education students will have all of their students or all of their needs met, plain and simple. There are some questions that come about. So for example, some of our other support staff, occupational therapy, speech therapies. What does that look like? How do they do that in a safe environment? And I'll be honest with you, we're sort of taking a little bit of the wait and see approach. Those are our professional staff members who work many times one-on-one with a student. And part of their job is actually working with the student and moving them, especially some of our physical therapists. So I anticipate that we will have very specific guidance from the state education department that likely mirrors those practices that are being employed in the medical profession right now. So for those individuals who are listening to us and want to know, one, will the needs of my students be met? Yes. Two, for our staff members, do I have any specific guidance for you and exactly what that's going to look like at this moment in time? No, I don't. I'm really anticipating that coming out probably in the next one to two weeks. So a couple of other topics that we need to make sure that we're sort of on top of as we talk about our plan for moving forward. Transportation. We need to take the plans that we develop at the building levels and consult with our transportation department to ensure that they're logistically possible. A couple of things that we will be taking into consideration when we bring students in. Our goal is if we're talking about, for example, we talked about cohorts. So that's groupings of students that basically stay together. Our goal would be to transport those students on the same bus. All of those students go into the same classroom. They leave the classroom and get onto the same bus. So classrooms and bus routing will be coupled together so that we don't have chances for potential cross-contamination. In other words, right now, we bus students based upon their geographic location and what makes the most sense. Moving forward, what we would do is ensure that our bus routing matches our class sizes and the classes. And that we're following what the latest requirements are with regard to the number of students that are on buses. One of the survey questions that I don't believe made it onto the information that I presented earlier was a question to our parents saying, would you be willing to transport your son or daughter or student into school? And the overwhelming question, answer to that was yes. So while we will provide transportation by the district, we will also provide opportunities for parents or guardians to also bring students in themselves. We're going to continue with our transportation department, the delivery of instructional materials, as well as the delivery of food, which really takes me to the next topic. And this is not necessarily an area of concern, but something that we logistically need to calculate is how do we provide lunch to all of these students? Not in the traditional buffet style where they're walking through a line, getting the food the way they typically do. Not all in the cafeteria, because we have to maintain social distancing. So we've been working through and we're, will continue to work with our food service provider to ensure that they're able to do that and that we can develop a plan that works and is logistically possible. So the last thing that I wanted to sort of wrap up with here are some, I hate to say concerns, but realistically, they're just that. They're concerns. They're things that we need to be thinking about as we finish the plan. And I hate to even say the word finish, because we're going to put a plan together. And then after the first week of school, I'm pretty sure that plans are going to need to be changed drastically to ensure that we're consistently meeting the needs of our students. But things that we're going to have to talk about and will continue to examine is transportation. I've already sort of addressed that to some degree. Entry and exit from buildings. We know that individuals all need to go through the screening process. Every student needs to have a temperature taken and be assessed to see if they have any symptoms of COVID before they come into the building. That's a kindergartner, a seventh grader, a senior, an adult, a visitor, someone doing work here as a contractor. They all have to go through that same process. So something that we need to think about is if I have all of these students coming in on a bus, how do I ensure that those individuals have been screened as they're coming into the building? How do we stagger start times if that becomes the answer? Do we provide thermometers to all of our families at home so that they can do on, our screening at home? Then how do we ensure the integrity of that screening that gets done at home? Because we'll tell adults consistently, please don't send your son or daughter to, or student to school when they're sick, yet they're still in school sick. And now the stakes of that have just gone up drastically. So we're, we're not blind to that. We're trying to figure out what that looks like. We also have general staffing concerns. We have high-risk staff members, those who have a variety of underlying medical conditions who have concerns. We also have the simple fact that if we have a, you know, if we have students in school, we're dependent upon our adult staff members. If they fall ill, do we have subs that will even come into the school in this circumstance? And then if we do have subs, there's a significant amount of training that has to go in place on our practices, procedures, and protocols to ensure that they're, you know, meeting what our expectations are. We also have contractual obligations. And I just wanted to take a moment at this point in time to express the district's gratitude for the Salamanca and to the Salamanca Teachers Association, our civil service unit, our Salamanca Support Staff Association, and the cell, the school administrators and supervisors association. All of those units have had leadership representation at our meetings that have been going on for the past three weeks. They have been exceptionally helpful in the development of the plan that we have in place. But at the same time, we have contractual obligations with them, such as with STA. Written right into the contract is a common start time and end time for all STA members in a building. So one of the recommendations that we see from the state, as well as a recommendation of almost common sense is that we may have to stagger start times so that we can get people in and out of the building without having a line of 400 people that stretches around the block as they all check into the one, two, or three locations. So we're going to have to work with them to figure out what that looks like moving forward. But I wanted to express my gratitude to them for the work that they've done this far. And I'm sure that we will come to common ground and ensure that we have fair practices across the board. We also just have basic compliance with rules. You know, we have students who have discipline concerns on the best day. Now those get even more significant when we have the potential for being too close to one another, social distancing infractions, I don't want to wear this mask, you know, just general compliance with our rules. And then we also have best instructional practices, which in many ways, what we know is best instruction in the classroom when students are here is not really going to be able to be practiced with the social distancing. It's, you know, we, if we have masks on, we lose that facial recognition and understanding that, you know, being a teacher, you know, you can look at a student and see if they're with you or not, if they're following along. But if we have masks on, I have a hard time identifying people that I've known for years walking down the hall as far as who they are, let alone trying to figure out if they understand the particular topic that I'm teaching and the individual nuances that go along with that. So those are all obstacles that are in the way. And while we don't have solid answers for those right now, they are in the forefront of our minds and things that we're thinking about. So the big takeaways, I guess, if I, you know, for those of you that have joined us late or dozed off in the middle of our going ons here, you know, is A, we're going to do everything to the highest level of safety. And if we can't ensure the safety of our students and staff, we're not going to be open for business. B, we're going to meet the requests and wishes of the parents of our students and the guardians. Very simply put, if a parent or guardian says, we're going to choose e-learning, we will provide e-learning and we will do an outstanding job of it. If I want my son or daughter or student to come to school two days a week and follow a hybrid model, if we're at that point in our school where we're allowing that to happen, we will provide that opportunity. If we're going to say, if a parent says, I need my, my student to be in school as much as possible, we will provide that service as well. You heard at the high school, you heard across the board that the very first week, we're going to be focusing on e-learning while we ensure that our staff has the ability, the training, the education, and the practices to, you know, implement our safety plan in an appropriate manner before we work with our students on that. So the first week will be remote or e-learning. We will begin to phase students in, particularly at Prospect, starting with third grade as we become more comfortable and ensure a safe environment. We're looking at a hybrid approach, quite possibly of something like Monday and Tuesday on with the same groups of students. We clean on Wednesday. And then Thursday and Fridays, we bring the next half of the students in who are in district. At Seneca Intermediate, same deal. We're starting one week with e-learning. And then we will begin to phase in, quite possibly, with our fourth and fifth graders. And then work our way up to sixth and seventh graders. At the high school, we're looking at really sort of the opposite approach. If students are highly successful with our e-learning, they'll know, continue with e-learning. If they're not, or are struggling, or need to come in, if they have to come in and either, that can either be they have to come in, I mean, they have to come in like they're not performing and we need to see them, we will work with them and they will come in and we can work with them. Or if they have to come in, meaning they feel the need to come in, we will work with those students to bring them in. If they need to come in for a half day, we can accommodate that as well. So when we look at the plan moving forward, those are our recommendations. As I said, timeline wise, those will be in paper shortly, put out to the community, coupled with our safety plan. We will look for input from the community and parents. And then that will go to our district safety committee to ensure that we're compliant with the expectations there and then ultimately to the school board. Now, some of you are saying, but isn't your plan due this Friday to state ed? Yes, we're already at a point where we've met the state ed requirements for what our plan is. But we haven't met our requirements for what our plan needs to be. Meaning it needs to be exceptionally detailed and be foolproof essentially for us to be taking the opportunity to bring students back. All right, I think that wraps it up for me, Mr. Brightenstein.
Thank you, Dr. Beeler and our building principals and all of the staff. Again, just a few quick add-ons. And it occurred to me as, as Dr. Beeler was talking about this and the principals were speaking, that if we look at this from a medical triage, emergency room plan, we're focusing in on the primary life-saving, education-saving, and wellness-saving activities. And as Dr. Beeler did note, there are still a lot of unanswered questions that we will continue to work on. And even after that fact, we will still continue to revise the plan. Phase three, four, five, six, 20, 10, 40. We will have several iterations of this over the next coming period of time. I would love to be able to tell you, as we've heard, to give you a timeline. I can't, but I can tell you that we will continue those communication models. One of the things that I know in speaking with a number of students today that they are concerned about, and we do have a responsibility to the wellness of our students regarding athletics. And the Public High School Athletic Association has issued some guidance on that. So that is helpful, but it doesn't answer all the questions. The students are concerned about co-curriculars and other activities. And we've had extensive conversations administratively that our approach is going to be a wait and see. I do know of other organizations that have said, we're done doing co-curriculars and extracurricular activities. We are not at that point. I don't think that that's appropriate. I think that's premature. We know the value of these activities for students and for our staff and for our community. So for those students who have asked about those other things that make their school experiences so robust and incredibly important to them, we're going to take a wait and see approach to that. It is a concern that we will have to address at some point in time. But today is not the day to address that. And we will get to that point and we will seek student and staff input on those decisions. Lots of other conversations. I want to thank Mrs. Beatty, who I think is on the call, for the incredible work to ramp up even higher our level of professional development. Mark is right. Our staff was well situated with the e-learning prior to the COVID. And it just helped us accelerate beyond that. But the level of professional development that our staff is doing for each other is incredible. And the level of support that we're getting to continue to do professional development is something that we can all take as a very high point of pride. With that, I'll turn it over, I guess, the next item on the agenda. I'll turn to Mrs. Ray is public participation to seek any further additional input. And we would ask if anyone has any commentary that they would like to share with the Board of Education, they could enter it into the chat function on Zoom. And we'll do our best to make those part of the official record and to respond to any of those comments if anyone so wishes to desire to do so. And I'll ask Levi to help me if that, if there are any submissions to that.
So while we're waiting for the chat, Bob, is there any board members that have any questions?
Oh, you know I do, T-Ray.
I knew that.
Thanks for the intro, though. Yeah, while we're waiting for any public questions or participation. One of the things I was just curious about, and it was a conversation earlier I had with our, some other folks. Are we doing any type of tracking with remote learning? Do we have to worry about any tracking for students for state aid or any kind of aid, things like that? And if we are remote learning, just as our own peace of mind or even for our own district, are we tracking these students if they're getting on any Zoom sessions or remote learning?
Great question. Thank you. We have some new technologies that will allow us to identify students who are actually participating, not just in the Zoom, which may be done synchronously. participating, not just in the Zoom, which may be done synchronously, and when I say synchronously, I mean, like sort of real time, so in other, like us right now. So we're presenting a Zoom class, and I can look on the attendance essentially and see who's here. We have some new technologies that are being implemented through class pages, that I can record a session like this, or a lesson, I can put that out through my class pages, and then I can actually stop it at certain points. Students are required to ask question, answer questions, and then they can continue. And in a Zoom session like that, I'll actually get feedback as the teacher, to see how much time they spent on it, I'll have an idea of whether or not they were actually there or not, so I can therefore take attendance. One of the things that we've discussed recently is how do we take attendance? Because I feel obligated that as a district, we need to be taking attendance. We have not received any guidance from the state saying, you need to take attendance, and this is how you're going to do that for remote learning, but we will be taking attendance. So when I spoke previously about the expectations for Zoom classes and e-learning, how we're going to be ensuring students are actually participating in it is going to be one of the components of the guidance and expectations. So to answer your, the short answer is yes, we will be taking attendance, both for e-learning practices, as well as for when students are here, obviously.
The first part, do we have to for any state tracking, aid tracking?
I have not received any information about that. I know that's a little bit more Ms. McGarrah's area, but, oh, there she's turned her mute off, so she's ready to go.
As of right now, the 180-day requirement has not been dropped. There has been some talk of it being altered, but as of right now, it is not. So yes, attendance will be vital for us to ensure that we receive the appropriate state aid for our students.
I can also add to that. There is some expectation with zero guidance that attendance will be taken, but a mechanism as to how that occurs and what level it occurs to is still unspecified. We do have a conference call with the board, with the State Education Department next week, and attendance tracking and 180-day requirements for aid is something that I'm sure is on the agenda. So stay tuned for that. If I can jump in, we do have a couple of questions. Some of them are pretty quick. So what about split households, where children are split between different households due to parental needs?
Oh, you're asking me?
I am asking you.
Oh gee, thank you. Okay. That was actually a question that came up with, particularly with transportation, and I don't know as though we have, we're cognizant of that situation. I can't say as though we have a hammered out answer to that at a point in time. I think what that's, in more specific detail, I think that's talking about transportation expectations, and that becomes particularly more challenging at Prospect, where we have many changes that occur during the day, as far as where students get dropped off, particularly at the end of the day. So to answer that question, we're aware of that, we don't have a solid answer for us at that point in time. I'll do a little bit of foreshadowing and say that we may have to have some conversations and work with parents, and reduce some of the multiple changes that occur during one day. So that's not, you know, I get pick up at one house and get dropped off at another, that's I pick up at one house, and then at 10 o'clock, we get a call saying they need to go to place A, at 12 o'clock, we get a call saying they need to go to place B, and then at, you know, five minutes before the students walk out the door, they need to go to a third location. We're simply not going to be able to accommodate that. It's kind of remarkable that we have done that just on a daily basis. But moving forward, there are going to be some things that we need to hammer out as far as what those expectations are. We will clearly, I talk about what those are ahead of time, they won't be a surprise to anyone. One thing that I think is important to note is that we anticipate over the next three to four weeks, that every family will be called, and I'm a big fan of calls, not just emails, to get feedback. And here, are you planning on sending your child to school? What are your concerns, so that we have a good understanding of what we're even up against with how many students could potentially be returning in the fall? These surveys are great, but we find that things change when it actually comes about and comes into play. So we're looking to get that actual contact and communication from parents in a one-to-one format through phone calls.
Okay, so next question. Well, from Mom's PC, the first question, Sean's iPad, it's going, I'm not sure how we're recording. Okay. The question is-
Bob, can you press your microphone?
Really good at that. The first question was from Sean's iPad, the next question is from Mom's PC, and if you're following in the chat, there is one other one, I've just got to read it a little bit more closely, but what masks are acceptable for students and staff?
Okay, so I'm going to actually read this right out of our safety plan, and this is a requirement for all individuals that are on premises, under wearing and carrying for face coverings and masks. Face covering and masks shall be worn by all building occupants unless precluded by medical conditions, which will be, have documentation be required. While on premises, you must have your, in your possession, a face covering or mask at all times. You must wear it immediately when in the presence of another. The face covering absolutely must be in place before having any close contact, and all the while you are having close contact with any other person. Close contact is defined as within six feet of another person, so that would be in common hallways, restrooms, and other areas. Cloth and disposable face coverings will be provided by the district, if they need to be. We will permit individuals to bring in their own face coverings, as long as they meet the requirements, which I'm going to discuss in a moment. Disposable face coverings should not be laundered, but they should be disposed of properly, and we will have proper accommodations for that. Let's see. So when wearing a face mask, it must be, when wearing it, it must cover the individual's nose and mouth completely. It must fit snugly but comfortably against the side of the face. It must fully, as I said, cover the mouth and nose, it needs to be secured with ties, elastic or ear loops. It should include multiple layers of fabric. It should also allow for breathing without significant restriction. And the longer-term ones should be capable of being laundered and machine-dried without damage. And there is, you know, there's another half a page over proper cleaning, as well as sanitizing, sterilization, and whatnot of the face covering. So hopefully that answers the question over what is acceptable, and at the same time, we also address, you know, how frequently they need to be washed. We know that students come to school with dirty clothes. If students come to school with a mask that is obviously soiled, we will have them available for students as well. We'll just give them, and we probably won't wash theirs, but we will absolutely provide them with new ones. We literally, at this point in time, have thousands of disposable masks, and I think Mr. Seibert probably has at least a couple hundred Class of 2020 masks available as well. I'm going to also just jump ahead and answer a question about technology. Absolutely, technology will be supplied, as we did in the spring. That would include laptops, iPads, as well as Wi-Fi for those individuals who need it. What does it look like when we have a positive COVID-19 case in our schools? So, and I don't want to bore you and read the five-page procedure that goes along with that. I will tell you that when an individual is identified, we will, we immediate, we are either contacted by the Department of Health, or if they are not aware of it, we contact the Department of Health. That particular part of the school, at a minimum, is closed down for 24 hours. We wait 24 hours before we go in to clean, so that we ensure the safety of our cleaners. Those areas are completely sanitized, and then depending upon the level of contamination, will be back open anywhere from 24 to 48 hours later. Now, that's the very minimum. I will tell you that we will likely, if we have a positive case, close, oh, I mean, that's your job, Mr. Brian Stein, but I'll just jump ahead, we're likely going to close that campus down, just to ensure the safety of everyone, go through a full cleaning. We then practice and go through the contact tracing. There's two parts to this. The county is actually the ones who are required to complete contact tracing, and just so we're on the same page, contact tracing is, you know, we have a person who is, has a confirmed case of COVID, and we go back to see who is it that they have likely been in contact with. We have identified an actual contact tracer in the district, that's Mr. Ray Haley. He was, provided that new title yesterday, and is very excited about it. And he will be looking through the sign-in sheets, class rosters, if it's a student. We also have new video camera technologies that will allow us to go through and see where did the student move within a building, what bus were they on? But those are the very minimum requirements. That student will not be permitted back until they are completely cleared by their healthcare provider. Let me just start working through. So next question, which is a great question, and one that I think we need to make sure we're on the same page with. What if our student starts working by e-learning? So I choose option A, which is e-learning, and it's not going well. Can we change to a different plan? It makes it sound like you're signing up with Verizon or something. Yes, absolutely. You know, we're going to look for some consistency, because one of the things that we're trying to do with, if a person does say, I'm going to go with e-learning, is to be able to use and create a classroom as much as possible, even though it's virtual, so create those relationships, so that they're the same, and provide some consistency, even though it's done electronically. So we're, we're going to ask that we limit the number of chain, plan changes essentially that we're making, but absolutely, if you're finding that we're, you know, e-learning is the option that we selected initially, and either, oh, I'm really comfortable with where the district is right now, safety-wise, and things seem great, yes, we will work with our counselors and get them into school. On the other side as well, if I say I'm going to send my student to school, but suddenly I'm not comfortable with how this is going, absolutely, we can work with you and switch you into an e-learning environment. We're looking for, you know, a several-week sort of commitment initially, so that we can, you know, create the, that sense of community, whether that be in-person or electronically, but we fully understand that some accommodations will have to be made as we make changes. How will students get handouts for class? Okay, so if we do e-learning, what does that look like? We'll still likely provide resources to be delivered to the home. At the same time, we now have the ability to have papers get turned in electronically, have them be given to students electronically. Class pages has enhanced, and our ability to utilize it has enhanced just within the past several months. We've also added some additional features that allow work to be turned in electronically, the teacher is notified of it, they can actually bring up a rubric, make comments on that work, the grade literally goes into the teacher's gradebook, and the student gets instantaneous feedback. Now, that's awesome, right? Because the whole point of turning in paper is to get feedback and an assessment of where you are with what, compared to what the expectations are for, for a student. We can now do that instantaneously. So that's a great practice, whether, and, you know, compared to, I know when I was in school, and I turned in a paper that I spent a lot of time on, or one that I did just the night before and whipped out quickly, you know, sometimes you didn't get that back immediately. Sometimes you ended up getting it back like one day before the end of the marking period with a whole stack of other papers, and your grade goes from 90 to a 70, or from a 70 to a 90. So there are a lot of practices that we have in school that are going to be a little bit different. We don't anticipate all of these papers going back and forth between student, family, home, and school. A lot of that can now be replaced electronically. If our child's schedule is set up for attending Bosse's in Elocottville, how will that work? Our intention is to fully accommodate those students who are currently enrolled or for CTE programming at Elocottville, or any other off-campus setup. So those individuals will be contacted. We're going to work with Bosse's to see how much instruction that we can actually occur at that location, so that we don't have to have people going back and forth as frequently. But our Bosse students are still going to be attending the Elocottville CTE site. Okay, terrific. And Mr. Seibert just informed me that he did contact the principal at the Elocottville CTE, and they're working together to come up with a solution to that, to make sure it works for everybody. So when will we have more information about, for children with individual learning plans? Will it be before September? I will tell you, it will absolutely be before September. So part of our concern here is, do we put together a step-by-step, do we build transportation routes, and put all of this in place this week, and then have the governor come out next week and say, hey, that's a nice job, but none of that's going to work, you have to do this, and follow my specific guidelines? All of us here have been in education long enough to know that we can spend a lot of time and energy putting together a really awesome plan, only to have it be turned upside down and negated, you know, a day later by a director from state ed or from the governor's office. So we have a lot of planning in place, but some of the things we're sort of holding back on until we get definitive guidance from the governor's office and from state ed, which has been promised to us for next week. But a lot of pieces, it's sort of like we have all of the pieces of the puzzle lined up, we haven't plugged them all in place, because we're just waiting for the final go. If we're whatever direction we're provided by the state, we'll rearrange the puzzle pieces, make it work, and be able to provide that information to our parents and community very quickly. How will students be monitored, the teacher, how will schoolwork be monitored? Okay, so the question is, how will schoolwork be monitored that the teacher gives to students? So if we talk about, you know, the remote learning and grading, those are two topics that are, you know, sometimes challenging to figure out. I will tell you that our high school and our district has had a grading committee that has been working all summer long for just that purpose, to determine what are the grading expectations, plain and simple, when we're back in school like normal, and then how do those grading expectations get adapted when we focus solely on e-learning? They have not completed that work at this point in time, so I hesitate to say what the exact answer is to that. But previously, I spoke about the expectations and the guidelines for Zoom meetings, as well as e-learning. Part of those are not simply what you look like in the Zoom session, but how is it that we're going to hold students accountable for the work? A high school student by this point in time, we're, we've adapted to the pandemic expectations at this point. Yes, people have different resources and abilities at home, but a high school junior needs to be able to get themselves out of bed, attend a Zoom class, do the homework that's required with that, even if they have other circumstances that are happening in the household. We will be exceptionally flexible and work with our students and our parents, but at the same time, we can't sacrifice an entire year of instruction and education. So we're committed to providing the best e-learning format possible, and to ensure that we're holding our students accountable for the learning that has to happen. Oh, let's see, start Channel 2 News. Channel 2 News had an article that the state has mandated everyone wear masks even when social distancing can occur. I know you said that if they can be distanced, they can be removed, so where does that stand? Our guidance at this, well, actually, I guess I should have watched the news. Our guidance at this point in time indicates that students can remove their mask if they're seated at their desk and are socially distanced. That is the practice that we plan to move forward with, unless we are suddenly told something different. You know, if that is the actual practice, that everyone has to have a mask on even when we're sitting at a desk six feet apart, you know, school is not really going to be as enjoyable of a place as it could be. And, I mean, that's to say, you know, to say the least, our teacher, and that's going to be a real struggle for our teachers, because we just don't, I said it earlier, we don't get that feedback. I listened to and read a report from a teacher who, thanks to Mrs. Schnafer, provided me an article, which was, it basically outlined and said, throughout the month of May, their school was permitted to do essentially an experiment, to say, okay, if we have to- school was permitted to do essentially an experiment to say, okay, if we have to all wear masks and follow these social distancing, how does that work? And this was a relatively affluent district that was, has a high success record. And they have plenty of resources and everyone was sort of watching what the rules and expectations were and how things were going to play out. And he fully went into the month of May with the expectation that this is going to be really successful. I've got good kids. They're, you know, they, these were high school kids. He also did a bit of a gig as a stand-up comedian, which many teachers think they are, but this guy actually went and did the stand-up comedy routine. And, you know, as he practiced and, you know, went through his routines, he realized, and as he talked with other professional comedians, you know, what is the worst crowd you've ever had? And he thought it would be a crowd that was angry, you know, and upset, and you have to sort of convince, win them over. And he said, the worst crowd that you can ever deal with as a comedian is a crowd that is completely affective and has no response whatsoever. And he said, when he taught his class, that's what he experienced. Because you don't get a smile from a student who says, oh, I get it. You don't get a miserable face from a student when they don't get it. You get nothing. And I guess that really sort of takes away a lot of the, the benefits of face-to-face instruction. And we always talk about meeting people face-to-face and the importance of that interaction and all of the communication that occurs there. So it will be very disappointing if we have to wear masks on a, all the time when our students are in school, because it's hard to even tell from a, from their teacher when they're making a joke or when they're serious. So, you know, there are masks with clear face pieces. I haven't seen that. In fact, I have to believe that after about 30 seconds, that gets gross with spit and everything else. But, you know, perhaps that'll be a technology that comes about that allows this to make a little more sense. That was my personal rambling. Sorry about that.
Correct answer to the last question was, I haven't seen the news article.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, that was much shorter than mine, too.
That works, too, yes. We, you know, you can't say that Dr. Beeler and the administrative team are not really deeply embedded in this conversation. Sorry, all kidding aside, I do want to thank them for this. And those are all of the questions that have been posed at this point in time. If the board members have other?
I have other questions.
All right. Mr. John has other questions.
Absolutely. Well, one of the things I was curious about is if we're doing the remote learning, looking at the school calendar, what are we going to do to accommodate those days that are holidays? If we're only talking about a four-day schedule? We have Monday holiday, a Tuesday holiday, a Wednesday holiday. If we're talking about a four-day schedule, are you going to rotate the schedule to accommodate those as the cleaning day?
Yes, that's a great idea. Yeah, we're, I'll be honest with you, we, so, yeah, there's also a couple pieces here, you know, in this, in the, in the spring, which we're, I don't, well, the expectation is we'll be able to have holidays, right? I mean, in the spring, we weren't actually allowed to even have holidays. So as we move forward, the expectation would be that we would follow the, the calendar. We will still acknowledge the chronological date as that particular holiday, but we will likely make shifts to the calendar system that we'll use for AA days or BB days and optimize that, if that day off happens to be a Monday, then we'll do our best to ensure that we're cleaning on that day so that we can maximize the number of days that students would be in school.
From, from 180-day perspective, our staff calendar is 187 days. So we have seven days that we could burn and still meet the 180-day requirement. We have the calendar set, I believe, for 183 or 184. I'd have to double check that, which means that there are four closing days, whether they're snow days or COVID days or cleaning days. We still have four consistent days where we can do that. The expectation that we have in the field is that there will be further guidance and flexibility as the state did during the spring through legislative action regarding the 180-day requirement or executive orders. I, I don't see a pathway where that doesn't happen. And if it doesn't happen, just in the world weirdest scenario that could happen, we are still well situated with more days than a number of our CA BOSI's component school district colleagues have. So if it, if that hits, we still have a few buffer days to know, and we will continue to track the calendar. Because until we have guidance, that is a concern because that is tied to state aid.
All right. Next. I do have, yeah, so it looks like one other question came through, which is, what if a child signs up for e-learning, comes to Zooms, but does not complete the work? Or if they sign up for e-learning and simply don't do anything at all? So that's a great question. And we, we not only realized that, but experienced that with several students in the spring. I will tell you that those students are still working on that work that they did not do in the spring. Philosophically, I'm not a fan of giving a student a 50 for not doing work. I'm a fan of giving student an incomplete and not allowing them to not do the work, or not allowing them to turn in something that is so subpar that we're just going to say, okay, you get a 50, and they're happy with that. They just take a pass and they're done. An incomplete means is literally incomplete and you need to do that. So we started to put that understanding in play. Students who did not perform as expected or complete work that they needed to do in the spring are still have an incomplete. We haven't decided if that incomplete is going to follow them into September or not, or into January, or on and on. But the general practice across all educational institutions or many of simply saying, oh, you failed, and then that's it, is failing our students. I think we need to make sure that our students understand that failing isn't an option, not doing work is not an option, and that you're going to be accountable for this work until that work gets done to a satisfactory level.
I had another question.
All right.
And it kind of actually ties into that a little bit. I wanted to know what we're going to do about staff supports for these kids who are the ones who aren't as attentive, as far as accountability for remote learning. We have a lot of support staff, TAs, a whole substitute list, our liaisons. What are we going to do as far as deploying those staff supports to help the remote learning?
We're going to do pretty much exactly that. So one of our situations before was that we did not have a good check-in process of whether or not students were on a Zoom class or watching it remotely. We've put some technologies in place that will key us in much more quickly, whether or not a student is participating. Then we will deploy those individuals, like you mentioned. We have an incredible number of very dedicated individuals who will go out into the community if they need to, to find out, you know, what is the problem? Is there a tragedy that has occurred that we can provide support for? Is it, you know, do you not have internet at home? Did, you know, do you decide to just, you know, video game for the past seven days instead of do anything else? In which case, we'll still help them with that and get over that. So those individuals will be out and about, just like they had, were in the spring. And quite frankly, our family support workers are still doing that right now with students who need to turn work in. So they will absolutely be deployed. I anticipate, especially as we move to an e-learning piece and having the resources here for our teachers, I'm hoping we can become more efficient at that process, which means that we might have, you know, a lesson that's taught for one or two hours on a day, and then that's available for students throughout that day. But that teacher then is available to either work with students in a small group or be able to work with a committee to say, these students are not performing to expectations. What can we do? So our child study teams will still be in existence. Those additional support people will still be brought in, and we will work with them to make sure that those students, falling through the cracks is not an option. And I hate to even say that because we know the students who fell through the cracks. So by definition, I'm not sure they fell through the cracks. They just weren't successful. We do a very good job, as it is, of tracking our students. What we struggle with is, we know this student isn't doing well. We have done A, B, C, D, E, and F, and they're still not doing well. What is G going to be? So we are committed through the entire alphabet, and then we'll start it all over again with what that's going to be. But we will do everything possible to ensure that those students get the resources and support they need because we have the people to do that.
Okay. Another question. This is a follow-up to the special ed you talked about earlier. You know, you did mention that we're going to be providing the services. Does that include the tutors for anyone who needs like a 504 IEP, signing the tutors in case they want the remote learning? How are we going to do that, too?
You always have good questions. Actually, the tutoring piece had not been in our plan at this point, but it will be tomorrow. So, you know, we have, and the other part of this is, okay, we need to shift to an e-learning scenario, and our goal is to have that mirror as much as possible what it would look like if we were actually in school and everything was normal. So teachers, students have access and have the ability to go to a tutor, and we will provide that virtually or e-learning or remotely or whatever that is. So we will still employ tutors and we will, whether that looks like sort of an office hours through e-learning, through Zoom, or whether that may be literally in person and the student comes in to work with a tutor after school. We're not totally precluding students from coming in as they need to come in. You know, everything can be going great until you stumble on a particular topic. And then all of a sudden, okay, I just don't get this and I'm done with Zoom. The student may very well just need to come in and work with a teacher for a certain amount of time. We fully understand that and will accommodate that, however that looks.
To that, and then I'll let Ms. Pavone jump in here, too. The, the task that we'll need to complete is using the other resources that we have at our disposal that other districts don't have, the Education Department at the Seneca Nation. We will continue to partner with the nation because our students are their students and their students are our students in most cases. That will be an individual, I would say, student-by-student analysis, and Mark touched on it a little bit, but the data analytics that we're able to get out of class pages is really spectacular. You can see when a student signs on, how long they're on, and whether they're interacting with the instruction. And I, I do want to highlight, and many of our staff are doing this exceptionally well, but eighth grade, even before the virus hit in the spring, was doing remarkable work with class pages as an entire grade level. And the entire eighth grade team really should be commended for being champions of this well before it was necessary. And I know there are a lot of other staff, and I don't want to leave anybody out. But if we have an individual student, as Mark had said, A through G is not being successful, it's our responsibility to work with every entity that we can connect to. And if there aren't entities, then find them to help that particular student or that particular family. I would agree that I am also not a fan of a 50 or a zero. I'm absolutely not a fan of zeros, and I don't want to get Mark started on a grading discussion. But it is important to note that we have to look at all aspects of assessment with a different lens, because a student that doesn't participate in Zoom may have nothing to do with the student, but their internet connectivity, or the fact that there are three other people in the household also on Zooms, mom and dad and siblings, that drain the bandwidth, and their lack of participation may be nothing that they can control. We wouldn't penalize a student for being late to school because the bus broke down. We would just say, okay, let's go, let's get you to where you need to go. Each individual student will probably need to be drilled down to find out what that root causes, and sometimes that's harder to find out than others. But we have the staff where we can continue to do that on an individual basis, and that includes partnering with the Seneca Nation, Liberty Partnership through JCC, and there are, there are a host of other entities that we work with.
There's a couple other questions which I get to address here. So the plan for breakfast and lunch for students? We have guidelines and expectations for what has to happen. We will still provide breakfast and lunch, but we know that they have to be socially distanced, that it cannot be the sort of buffet style that we have traditionally. That will, the very specifics to that, so that may be enough to answer that question, is that we're going to have it and we're going to make it work. It may occur in a classroom. It may occur where people go into a gymnasium, or it may occur in our typical cafeteria, depending upon the number of students that are actually in the building. But some of that, this very specific pieces will be dependent upon the number of students that are in the building on that particular day and, you know, moving forward. So yes, we will have breakfast and lunch. Can I tell you exactly where they will eat lunch? No, but we will be providing breakfast and lunch as we normally do. There was a question about childcare specifically for staff. There's, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, if we talked about staff coming into school, which they would be doing any other time anyway, so if we're talking about non-school-age children, then I would think that we would have childcare already set up and whatever that might look like. I think that I'm understanding that as, okay, I have school-age children, I teach in the district, and my children aren't going to school because, you know, their school is closed. I would say, we are happy to have you enroll your children in the Salamanca School District. You can bring them here. We have excellent teachers. And that would also accommodate the childcare needs that you have for your own school-age children. Beyond that, I'm not exactly sure what we, what we can do, and that may be a greater conversation.
Yeah, I think that's an important question. I read that in a different way, because speaking as a parent whose daycare is shut down right now because of COVID and has no plans of reopening, that was, you know, my, my employer, yeah. So I, and there are districts that are providing childcare for employees that are required to come into work. So I, I read that in a different way.
Okay, terrific. Actually, I wasn't aware that childcare facilities had been shut down, and obviously, you would know.
Yeah, there's very few open right now. There's one in Chautauqua County that's open. Most of them are closed down because of COVID.
Okay.
I can provide some additional background on that. There is a, a meeting that is trying to be scheduled between the two BOSI superintendents for Cataragus and Chautauqua Counties, for Erie Two BOSI's and CA BOSI's. There, it's also being facilitated, I believe, by the JCC as well because of the daycare shortages. We do have a partnership on a countywide basis with Allegheny and Cataragus Counties to provide linkages for essential workers, which was dating back to the spring. And that partnership is still operational. It hasn't really been utilized. But if there is a specific linkage, I'm not aware of local districts that are providing daycare to families. So Meg, if you know that, if you can shoot me that, that would be great. Or if the individual who submitted the question, Brittany, if you know which district that is, I, I'm happy to reach out to them. If they're school age, we'll, we're happy to enroll them. And if you're a staff member, you can do that tuition-free. If they're not school age and they're younger, then that's going to take a little bit more time to do some more research. So we'll take any information you have.
Absolutely. Let's see, one just talked about here is with regard for the plan for special education students. We are 100% committed to meeting the IEP requirements for our students and, you know, doing the absolute best that we can with that. We have been working with the Director of Special Education as we've been putting these plans together. There are all sorts of considerations that must be put in place and taken into consideration as we build a plan, where students have access to their peers at various times. So even if they're in a class, in, speaking of lunch, you know, what does that look like? Even if it's a virtual lunch, they need to be able to go into the general regular ed classrooms for lunch. So we understand that, we are accommodating that. I don't know, Mrs. Dudak, I see you popped up here. Is there anything you want to talk about with respect to that?
Sure, not a problem. We will also be, myself and my assistant, once we have a better plan from the governor, we don't want to be calling families and a day or two later, calling families with a change, and two days later, calling again with a change. But once we have a solid plan based on everything you've heard tonight and from the governor and the State of Education Department, we will be reaching out to our families, starting with our families and students that are in our classrooms that are special classes, both on campus and off-campus, and then moving into our other students to talk about the needs of the students, to talk about the services that can be provided within those locations, how those services would look, and options for the families as well. So if anyone does have- So if anyone does have specific questions regarding their individual child with an IEP, whether they are here on campus or off campus, please feel free to give our office a call, leave a message and I will personally get back to you or my assistant will get back to you as quickly as possible.
All right, thank you. I think that there's just one other question that came up at the end here, you know, are students going to have a choice? And we, we did talk about that. So yes, students will have the, a choice between e-learning or a hybrid or in-school approach. And that will realistically, at the end of next week, as we begin to contact families and parents to find out what their plans are so that we can build our plans around that, we'll make sure we're all on the same page.
Oh yes, I am too.
Click that button there, there we go, okay.
All right, my turn again?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to know more, Bob, we talked about this the other day. Collaboration with Ellicottville as far as our big picture students. How are we supporting that? How are we getting information to our parents and families in our district? Because obviously their kids are going to be housed in Ellicottville School.
Right. I have a little bit more information. I don't have the definitive answer. Earlier this, well, late this afternoon, I did receive a communication from BOSIs with their plan that they plan on submitting. So I haven't had a chance to read that. It came out late this afternoon. What I do understand is that the BOSIs vocational students, our students that attend the career tech ed programs at the Ellicottville Center, that they will be up and operational with students in attendance every day for an AM session. Typically, I think for the seniors, Chris is in the AM. Seniors in the afternoon, juniors in the morning. That includes approximately 70 or so of our students that will attend either AM or PM. So approximately 35 per session. My very simple understanding without getting confirmation from the exceptional ed office at BOSIs is that students that attend programs in component districts, that they will follow the model submitted by the component district. And if there are individual differences, those will be addressed site by site in conversation with the component district host building. I don't have a definitive answer on that yet, but I'm sure that's in their plan that I'll take a look at tonight. I don't know if there's any other conversations the building principals have had that I'm not aware of. Okay. And without putting Kristen on the spot, we do have a number of students that attend, that do attend agency programs outside of our region, whether they're private agencies or School for the Deaf. Those individual programs, we're still waiting for confirmation as to what their instructional plans will look like.
Correct. And those agencies have been in weekly contact with us or at least keeping up surprise of where they are in their process. As soon as they do reach out to us, we will be making immediate calls to those families that are impacted.
Thank you, Kristen.
All right.
One last question.
Uh, let me see, are masks, are students going to have a choice? Oh, let's see, what is going to happen to staff's school age children who are learning from home online while district employees are required to work on campus? I, I don't know as though I have a good answer for that, other than we are happy to enroll them in our district. And we can do a great job of educating them.
What if they are from our district?
Then they would probably be in class, our class. Right.
I'm sorry, I've got a crying baby here. What if they don't want their, their students to be on campus? What if they want from home for safety concerns, but they're required to come into work?
Right. So, I mean, I guess I don't have very good answers to that at this point in time. And we're going to have to probably look at those on a one-to-one basis. You know, and going back, we have contractual requirements, we have equity and fairness issues that have to be figured out there. So, you know, there, we would have to look at those as the situations arise and ensure that we're not only doing everything we can to meet the employees' needs, but also the employees' essentially their obligations. So I don't know as though I can answer that without really sort of diving into it in more detail.
The other part too, that I would draw back to Mark's original statement and my original statement when this meeting began is our, our primary concern is safety, wellness and education. And we recognize that there will be individual circumstances, medical, where staff will be directed by their healthcare provider that they cannot be here because they have legitimate bona fide health concerns. We know that. We know that that will impact a number of staff regardless of title. We also know that there are a number of staff members that will have personal circumstances and wellness issues where they cannot comfortably and still fulfill wellness responsibilities be in school. Those are going to be challenges. We know that the federal guidelines under the Federal Sec Leave Act, the FSLA, which is a 10-day, 14, 14-day calendar, 10-workday rolling calendar or concentrated calendar, that there are avenues for that. New York State has not yet provided guidance on what the state will do. Previously, earlier in the COVID, they said, if you're off and you can't be here because of COVID, you're still getting paid. So stay tuned for that because right now the state has not taken action and the fed guidelines are still in effect. But that's a one-hit wonder from the feds. It's a one bite of that apple. And if it's longer than that period of time, I don't have an answer or guidance for that. What I have come to understand is that individuals in those unique circumstances where they don't have a medical issue and, but they do have a wellness issue or a childcare issue, there are days built into the contractual calendar of days that they receive. That is one avenue. That is obviously not the best avenue and, but it is an avenue. And I would say to those individual staff members, you need to reach out directly to your building principal, explain what you can explain that you're comfortable with to your building principal or immediate supervisor, again, regardless of title, and reach out to your collective association leadership. Because this is, as I said last week, an all-hands-on-deck event. The, the quick, curt, business-like answer is, you've got days, take them. That's not our approach because I don't have a complete answer to that question other than talk to your principal, give us documentation and guidance from what your individual circumstances are and we will work with you to the very best of our abilities. I do want to say that the individual who asked about the district, that there is a, I won't say the district because I don't want to, you know, because I don't know, but they indicated that a district in our BOSIs has indicated they will provide childcare. So I do have that contact information. I will reach out to that superintendent ASAP to find out how they're doing it, whether they're doing it in-house or whether it's just an after-school or before-school kind of turnkey program or if they've contacted and contracted with an outside vendor. But I will follow up on that now that I have the name.
Terrific. All right. I keep getting one more question. All right, all right, at least we got two more now. So specials will be done remotely. What about students who have band or chorus lessons? Yes, I fully anticipate that lessons will occur. Both vocal lessons, so chorus as well as instrumental, which would be band lessons. Those can occur in small groups. There is a challenge to having those in-person and that the social distancing requirements actually go from six feet to 12 feet for, for singing and instrumental lessons. So that becomes, you know, a tremendous space requirement as we expand. But I fully anticipate that those lessons will occur through e-learning and through Zoom lessons. Mr. John?
If, if that is in-person and if they are doing lessons, would that be like the auditorium? Could that be?
Correct.
Okay. Um, mine was about the transportation, about our remote learning. We did the Wi-Fi buses last spring. If we're transporting kids, how are we going to do Wi-Fi buses? And how are we going to do the lunch deliveries?
So we anticipate that the lunch deliveries would occur in the transition time between, you know, the typical pickup and drop-off, even though those are going to be flexed and sort of staggered. Our transportation staff is, works essentially for two hours in the morning. They have usually about two hours or an hour and a half sort of break in between. And then they come back for two hours in the afternoon. What we would look to do is take volunteers to expand their time that they're working with us so that they would do the morning runs, do lunch in the afternoon, and then continue those afternoon runs. So the delivery of food can still occur at the same, and for certain sites. At the same time, we had a conversation today about, and this will really be a bit dependent upon our food service provider is, you know, do we really do daily lunch runs now? Or has it become every other day and we just provide two meals or a box of food for a longer daytime period? So we're still committed 100% to providing lunch for our students that are on campus as well as providing lunch for students who are not on campus. That might just look a little bit different as we move forward. The other part to your question, which is slipping my mind right now, lunch, how do we do? Uh, Wi-Fi buses. That, so we have eight additional buses actually that are, I believe we took delivery of today. So we have more physical buses. At the same time, we had those Wi-Fi buses because the Wi-Fi is on those buses. If that becomes a need again in the fall, if we hear that that's a need, that was just easy for us because they were on a bus. We can take those Wi-Fi devices and attach them to pretty much anything with a battery. So we could park a car someplace. We could also simply say, you know, if, if this business would allow us, we could put a high, a Wi-Fi hotspot next to a business in a parking lot and that can be a remote access point. It could be indoors. I'm thinking if there was a, a, a building that's currently not being utilized, we could actually establish a Wi-Fi hotspot right there. They would typically go on a bus, but we would just not have it on a bus or just have an additional unit.
Additional question that kind of may have gotten overlooked, but a question, follow-up to a previous question we answered about staff who, can some staff teach remotely instead of the building?
Right. I love how you'll give these tough questions to me. Okay, yes.
Well, we talked about this one.
I know, I know, no, I know. Yes. So actually, and I'm going to go back to the guide here, and this really goes for everyone. So any of our employees that are at high risk, so that's adults who are 65 years of older, people with underlying medical conditions or, and are directed to, oh, sorry. They're directed simply to report that to their supervisor. Their supervisor has been instructed and all of the supervisors that those individuals are going to be, work with Mr. Bridenstine. He's going to be the point of contact so that any special circumstances can be accommodated to the best of our ability, both contractually, legally and in, in what's best for everyone involved. But some of the things that we might do, because this is, we're, we're thinking teachers right now, but there's all sorts of folks that this, that we employ that this could affect. You know, there could be very other social distancing practices. So a remote work site could very well be put in place for them. Different type of telework. We could do other precautionary procedures that could be in place for PPE, so personal protective equipment. There's a wide range of things that we can do for those individuals. So there, the, the, the short answer there is those individuals will need to speak to their supervisor and then the supervisors will be working with Mr. Bridenstine to come up with a plan that makes sense. Right. So, you know, the secondary contact piece, I would still say that that would be the same process. We know that this is, I said before, it's a very person-to-person business. It's a people business. I think we're good at that. So, you know, those cases will be handled specifically by Mr. Bridenstine. I do see that there's one more. Will you be bringing in additional cleaners for the day you do cleaning? Yes. We're currently evaluating, right now we're okay with cleaners, but we fully anticipate that we will be bringing on additional cleaning staff. Those folks are essential for us. They've always been essential in the context of essential workers. But even more importantly, they are essential to us as, as people. So we're going to be working with them to ensure that not only are there simply enough cleaners, but that our cleaners are treated appropriately and are provided with all of the training and personal protective equipment that is necessary for them to be safe.
The answer to that also is we will hire additional cleaners, as Mark had said, but we're also looking for additional transportation staff. That does require some additional 19A driver training. But if you are interested in driving for the district and getting your 19A certification, we will help facilitate that. We will take any and all drivers that we can.
Clarify, what was that, 1980?
19A is the Department of Transportation certification requirements.
Well, what does that entail?
There is, there is a test, there is a testing component for the responsibilities of the road, but there's also a driving component. And essentially, and this may not be the most accurate way to describe it, but there's also a supervised driving component where the 19A trainer in the district, Ms. Brisley, will ride with the driver to provide them additional coaching and instruction while they're driving without students on the bus.
And while we have a bunch of people who I'm sure will share this information with other people, we as the district are happy to provide that training. We provide that training. So you, if you don't have a commercial driver's license, a CDL, if you don't have that 19A certification, we will be happy to work with you to train you.
Drivers that we hired do get health insurance. Our drivers are full-time based on their contract, the, unless they're just day-to-day substitute drivers. We'll still train them and get them certified if they only want to be a sub. But if they're interested in, in driving for the district, that is a pretty good deal and we really could use some help.
We did. They're, between their, they get a wonderful benefit package, including insurance and whatnot, but their pay is exceptionally competitive. Particularly with insurance or with the health insurance. Yes, absolutely.
I have a question for you that's not related to COVID. What happened over at Vets Park today?
Ah, so at Vets Park today, they laid out the Warrior Head, which will be the centerpiece of our new multipurpose field. It is exceptionally large. It looks fabulous. I believe Mr. Spooner has taken some images. So maybe you could actually throw one of those up now since we've changed topic. If that, if I'm not putting you on the spot while we're wrapping it up. But it looks absolutely terrific. If, I'd encourage anyone to, you know, take a moment to look at our website and see the progress that's being made over at Vets Park with regard to the athletic turf and what's happened. It really is making some great progress. And I see there is one more question. Oh, all right. Oh, there we go. So you can see a couple of things actually, as this brings up more to talk about if we really want to extend tonight's meeting on a little longer. So at this point in time, what's happening is they're cutting out the green turf and actually installing various marks. So you're in the process right now of the lining. They'll be cutting out and putting numbers in, hash marks, other demarcations for various athletic contests, you know, that'll be on there, including lacrosse and soccer markings. The Salamanca Warriors lettering, which will go in the red end zones. You see Warrior down on the bottom left, that lettering is being put in place. And on the bottom right, you see a red blob which will say Nation. You'll also notice that our Warrior in the middle currently looks ill with a green face. We, the district has elected to purchase a custom color that will be utilized to more accurately represent the Seneca Nation members. So that is coming and will be replaced shortly.
To the right.
To the right, the big, that's a building, actually. Boy, you knew we were getting a big scoreboard. It's not that big. Holy cow. That is going to be the new concession locker rooms and team room and restrooms.
And just in terms of staging for the area, weather permitting, they will begin to install the nine or 10, I think nine, light poles. And the scoreboard is expected to be mobilized, again, weather permitting, next week, and beginning with the baseball scoreboard, and then the large multipurpose field Jumbotron.
So while that's up there, I was just, the question came up right before we cut to this about science labs, and that's a terrific question. We have several different courses that require performance-based experiences. So say, for example, any of our traditional shop classes, I'm going to, they're not shop classes, but our technology, education, art, as well as science classes. In the spring, the State Education Department modified the lab requirements and the minutes. I'm anticipating that they're going to do that for the fall as well. Either way, we have the resources and ability to provide, to meet that requirement through simulations. I'm not a, I mean, simulations are just that, a simulation. Many of our science teachers had students doing science at home using standard household items and counting that as a lab. So that's everything from, you know, I was a chemistry teacher, we would do kitchen chemistry, you know, whether that be, you know, cooking, or whether that be, you know, various other experiments that you can do safely in your kitchen. I anticipate that our science teachers will be meeting that requirement, both through simulations, as well as experiments that can be done at home safely, for those students who are on 100% e-learning.
Okay. I just wanted to say too, I saw Levi put up that the presentation and video are going to be on our website. Are we also going to have a place for people that watch it to input their questions, and then at the next board meeting, we can kind of go through and re-answer some, or have the ability to answer them on the website?
Yes, we'll get an online form up there where individuals can provide additional feedback and questions to us.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah. Of course. A little bit different topic, but one of the things that I was thinking about, now that we had the spring kind of, you know, taken away, and now we're looking at all these options for the fall, I was just curious to know what's going on with some of our other initiatives, and in particular, my brother's Keeper Grant with the development of the Seneca history, culture curriculum. What's going on with that?
Terrific question. A committee of individuals has been meeting every two weeks through Zoom. We have developed a lesson, actually, a number of standards and learning expectations for grades four through seven. Previously, that sort of culminated in the Long House Project. We've evaluated the Long House Project to determine where that really sort of best fits moving in. But with the assistance of Dr. Taylor, we have actually more clearly articulated what the expected learning is with regard to Seneca history at grades four through seven, and indigenous, and Native American history, to be even more comprehensive. So there are a large number of learning outcomes that are, you know, we've identified. We're running that, and it's on me right now to get a group of four, five, six, and seventh grade teachers together to take those learning expectations and identify where in the existing curriculum it makes the most sense. So that's grades four through seven. We have also then taken and moved on to the high school. Mr. Taylor, or Dr. Taylor, rather, has identified and evaluated the US history curriculum, which is typically taught in grade 11, and identified specifically items that have not been included in the state curriculum for US history relative to Native American history. That has been turned over to Mr. Musial, who is looking to determine how that can sort of get woven in, so that we have a much more accurate depiction of US history with respect to Native American contributions and history. Additionally, we've started a myths and realities with regard to indigenous peoples throughout the entire United States. The intent of that document is to provide sort of four facets. One are just that, myths and realities, current understandings and perspectives, controversial topics, and then lesson plans that can be utilized around each one of those. The intent for that is to be an educator resource, particularly as we move into Native American Heritage Month. So it eliminates a lot of the sort of misnomers and misinformation that is out there about Native American history, provides the appropriate educational context for it, informs the teacher, you know, what are sort of areas to stay away from, so to speak, in other words, like, or, or what is currently a controversial topic, and then provides lesson plans around that, so that they can do a better job of celebrating Native American and Native American Heritage Month. I have had an opportunity to work on each one of those, and honestly, I've learned an incredible amount myself. And Dr. Taylor is an incredible wealth of knowledge when it comes to the background knowledge between this. So that, even that single document of myths and realities is going to be exceptionally helpful for not just our teachers in Salamanca, but really our educators across the state and realistically across the country. So that's where we are right now. That is ongoing. So every, we just extended it three weeks this month, but every two to three weeks, the group gets together, Dr. Taylor presents the information that he has been working on. The teachers sort of review it, say, okay, this makes sense as a steering committee, and then we will look to, we're going to really sort of be test piloting it in our district in the fall. The testing and putting it actually into place is a little bit more challenging now that we're not actually here, and we're not, you know, some of our instruction, traditional, has been upset. But that work is continuing full force moving ahead.
Okay. Anything else?
Why is everyone looking at me? Oh, there's six, six others of you. Come on, Dale, what do you got?
I have no questions.
Microphone. Turn your mic on.
Is there going to be plenty of water available for the kids?
Terrific. So one of, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. So the question is relative to hydration and the availability of water, or other fluids for that matter. One thing that will be disabled, and is, I believe, currently disabled, are vending machines, because those are high-frequency touch areas, as well as the water fountains. Right. So Mr. Pankowski is in the process of getting caps to turn off the water fountains, but you'll notice that we have expanded our water fountain repertoire to include bottle fill stations. Hopefully, there's one behind me. All right. The bottle fill stations will still be fully operational, and we may very well be looking at purchasing water bottles for students that can be refillable. Not only is it good for hydration, but it's good for our environment and just makes sense as well. So those are no-touch sensor operated, so we can continue to hydrate our students in a safe manner.
Good.
Okay. Anyone else? Bob, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I think the last thing is just to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, correct.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Sue Freeze.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Colton, second.
So we got a motion by Sue, second by Dale. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
7:54.